Okay, next on our agenda is the roll call of the board. Margaret Burks. Christina Welch. Luanne Davis.
Present.
Nathan Meyer.
Present.
Chris Oakman.
Present.
Jim Frattonberg.
Present.
Steve Hutchins.
Here.
Scott South.
Present.
Jim Waddell is present.
Hey Jim, this is Christina Welch, I'm present, but I was double muted, I apologize, but I'm here.
Okay, you're here, good, welcome. Next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the September 13th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Chris Oakman.
Chris, okay, seconded by Jim. Any further discussion of the board? Christina Welch.
Yes.
Luanne Davis.
Yes.
Nathan Meyer.
Yes.
Chris Oakman.
Yes.
Jim Frattonberg.
Yes.
Steve Hutchins.
Yes.
Scott South.
Yes.
And I vote positive also, so unanimous vote. Next on our agenda is the Planning Board Annual Meeting. What we need to do is elect a chairman and a vice chair. The screen just went small for some reason. Community Development Director serves as secretary, so... What's the pleasure of the board? We'll go with Chairman first, what's the pleasure of the board? Any nominations?
I'll nominate Jim Waddell to continue the seat.
So Jim Waddell, okay, any other nominations? Okay, Christina Welch.
Yes.
Luanne Davis.
Yes.
Nathan Meyer.
Yes.
Chris Oakman.
Yes.
Jim Frattonberg.
Yes.
Steve Hutchins.
Yes.
Scott South.
Yes.
And, uh, thank you. Now, Vice Chair, any nominations?
This is Luanne, I would like to nominate Jim Frattonberg for Vice Chair.
Okay. So, say, any other nominations on the floor? Okay, Christina Welch.
Yeah, yes.
Luanne Davis.
Yes.
Nathan Meyer.
Yes.
Chris Oakman.
Yes.
Jim Frattonberg.
Sure.
Steve Hutchins.
Yes.
Uh, Scott South.
Yes.
And I'll vote also, unanimous vote.
Well, wait a minute, you didn't ca... I am here now.
Oh, well, excuse me, I didn't know you were here.
Well, I thought this, there's something was wrong with this delightful telephone company.
How would you like to vote? When did you come in, Margaret?
I'll vote for you and this present one.
Okay. Unanimous vote, and again, the Community Development Director will be, will serve as the, as the secretary. Okay, next item on our agenda is a public hearing. Barry Siegel, agent for owner, requests a conditional use rezoning from RS 20 to RSQ-C, residential, single-family, quadri-prec, conditional use district, for the property located on the eastern side of Kern Road, at the southeastern side of the intersection of, with Dean Road, containing a total of 51.58 acres, and being all of pin number 6887-25-4082.00. Use requested is residential, single-family, this is zoning document K 793. I have a little script here I need to read also. We will now open the public hearing for the case. We will call on those in support of the application first, followed by those in opposition of the application. When speaking, please be concise and avoid repeating information already shared by other speakers. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Beth, who will, who will call out those in favor of the petition.
Chairman, we're gonna do a staff presentation first, and then we'll let Beth call on folks. So we'll start with the staff presentation, and I'm gonna go ahead and stop.
Oh, I'm sorry, staff presentation, yeah, go ahead.
I'm gonna stop my camera, you should still be able to hear me, and can everyone see the screen? Just give me a quick thumbs up if it's working for you, excellent, I appreciate your patience. This is always an adventure, okay. Okay, tonight's case, K 793, is a rezoning for a property that's 47.01 acres. It shows a little bit differently than it actually is, it was, there was a boundary line adjustment done approximately following the creek and the sewer line right here, earlier this year, so the, the new parcel boundaries haven't been provided to us by the Register of Deeds, the Forsyth County Register of Deeds, so it looks a little bit different on here than it actually does on the site plan, but the owner is Larry and Betty Callahan, Barry Siegel of BSC Holdings is the agent and petitioner. The proposed rezoning is from RS 20 to RSQ, conditional use. The proposed use is residential, single-family, so 118 units are the total proposed unit count with the conditional district site plan, that works out to a unit per acre of 2.51 units. So this property is located in the ETJ, this yellow hatched area shows area that's in the Kernersville extraterritorial jurisdiction, so that's area that is anticipated that perhaps one day may become part of town limits, but is not currently under town jurisdiction or town limits, it's under the town zoning jurisdiction, but certain services are still provided by Forsyth County, so the ETJ is kind of a funny little area in that it's somewhat in the town, somewhat in the county, but is the area that's anticipated that a town may grow, so the current town limits are shown in gray, as it includes the North Lake subdivision, Spring Lake Estates, and then Brown Run, Lisa Run Drive area over here, so Kern Road, just to orient you, runs north to south, right here. The zoning around this property is RS 20 with some RS 12 and some other, another business use close by, so RS 20 is on both sides of Kern Road, and extending up to Pine Grove. Again, North Lake, Spring Lake Estates, and then the Brown Run area is RS 12, that's existing, there is a small little pocket of business there on the corner, so it is a bit of a transitional area headed out into the unincorporated part of the county. The rezoning site plan becomes the plan for development if it were to be approved, so that's the good thing about the conditional use districts is that when, when and if it's approved, that site plan becomes part of the ordinance, and that's the only thing that could be developed without going through the process again, so changes and deviations to the site plan or conditions require a new rezoning, especially if it does not fit within the minor staff change process. The site plan shows 118 lots for single-family detached houses and additional stormwater control measures, including two wet ponds and a bio-cell retention facility. Buffer elements are different because no continuous buffer is required, the UDO does not require buffering from like uses, so it's judging single-family next to single-family. Multi-family next to single-family would be required to have a continuous buffer, but the RSQ falls within single-family per the landscape ordinance. But the applicant is proposing a mixture of fencing and landscape berms, plus the retention of existing natural areas to supplement along adjacent property boundaries. So the, due to the length of the parcel, the site plan is split over two pages with a match line, and I think some of you have seen you flipping out your big pages, so you have that, but it is on two pages with the match line being right approximately here. Also being a conditional use district, the, the applicant has to specify the use that they are intending, so that becomes the only use allowed on the property, so the proposed use is residential building, single-family, which is defined in the UDO as a residential building which contains one dwelling unit and which occupies its own zoning lot, this term includes modular housing units. Modular housing units are built to state building code, that's not proposed here, that's included in the definition in the UDO. So these were included in the packet as Appendix C, these are just the first elevations of the submitted elevation types, many of them had different variations for architectural interest, staff has proposed conditions that would prevent them from looking different, so we've incorporated conditions number five through nine regarding the size of the home, the architectural features that have been shown, the height of certain structures, and the requirement to vary the exterior design on each block and the length of the driveway, so whether this developer was doing it or it was sold to another builder, the, when we're issuing permits, we would be looking to check each of these boxes to make sure that the conditions are applied and submitted by whoever is, is building on the property, so the architectural designs do appear to be consistent with the central Kernersville overlay district, this is our most restrictive design district, but again, the elevation renderings are submitted as kind of a showing of what they're looking to do, and then the conditions incorporated bring the requirement to do so. The case, our, the site plan also showed a berm being constructed along lots number 60 through 70, that runs south to north along Kern Road. It was located in a 30-foot landscape and berm easement along the road, so without additional details, staff drafted conditions of the berm design to provide a standard for review. The applicant's engineer contacted us today to provide a revised scenario based on constructability without overwhelming the adjacent properties, and staff concurs with the revision, so we will propose a minimum of a six-foot-high berm with three to four-foot-wide crown at the top with no more than three to one side slope, so that would construct, that would guide what it looks like, and this is consistent with other berms that are in residential areas along major thoroughfares in town. I will do still require the plantings must meet a type-one buffer yard and not just be mulch or grass, it must be planted, and this also increases the required width of the easement, it was shown as 30-foot, but due to the width, it would need to be approximately 40-foot for the maintenance and the preservation of the berm, and the applicant and his engineer have agreed to adjusting the easement shown on the site plan to that 40-foot, so that way it would be recorded as part of the lots. The land use plan designates this area as low-density residential. Low-density residential is defined as having a maximum of three units per acre or less. The parcel is already in proximity to land with higher zoning. The residential developments along Limble Springs Road and Pine Grove Road are all zoned RS 12, and they do also meet the low-density residential designation. So the land use plan defines low-density residential again as zero to three, this one works out as 2.51 units per acre. We've received a lot of comments about that being funny math, and it, and it does sort of appear that way, but it is the standard to divide the total number of lots by the total number of acres. Even though they're not developed on, they are integral to the part of the parcel, the stormwater is on it, the roads are on it, so that's the industry standard for having to calculate density. So this shows the site there at the north with the surrounding area showing as low-density residential, that's all the yellow, the red there at the corner of Kern Road and Old Valley School Road, that's an existing business, but that's showing the business use in the future land use plan. Again, future land use plan is also showing what the town, it's like a guy, it serves as a guide for the town, what we want to see there, it's, it's not always set in stone, that's why you've seen some rezoning cases that have KDP amendments that have gone along with them, those are, those are applied and noticed when the, the project requires the KDP amendment in order to happen, like the one on Brookford Road, that's our most recent one, but in this one, it does meet the ordinance definition at 2.5, which is less than three units per acre. Traffic is another concern that we've received a lot of comments about. The proposed subdivision has three points of access, one on Kern Road, one on Fairweather Drive, and one on Roswell. The North Carolina Department of Transportation reviews the submitted plan set as a member of the Development Review Committee. The requirements would include the right and left turn lanes on Kern Road, a driveway permit, and that's the permit in order to like build the road and make the connection, an encroachment permit for any utilities that would need to be, any utility work within the right-of-way, and then negative access easements along Kern or Dean Road. The point of the negative access easements, though it's not possible because of the berm, that prevents people from developing their own driveway and having like a bunch of little driveways that also feed out to Kern Road, so that keeps other connection points from being made, though in this case it wouldn't be possible due to the berm. The Kernersville thoroughfare and street plan shows the road network hierarchy. Roads are classified from freeway at the highest point of the hierarchy to residential streets, which are the lowest. Kern Road is classified as a major thoroughfare, and Rockford Road is a collector. So this map shows the subject parcel highlighted here in blue, Kern Road shown as the red major thoroughfare, Rockford Road shown as the blue collector, and the yellow are shown as local streets, so if you think about it as a funnel, you are trying to funnel to the highest order of street, which would be a freeway, though in this case, in this area, it's the major thoroughfare Kern Road or Pine Grove Road. The Institute of Traffic Engineers Trip Generation Manual provides estimates for a total, total trips, and that's, that's considered the 24-hour period, and as well as the AMP and peaks, so these are ratios based on the number of units that are proposed. So their latest manual says that single-family residential will, on average, generate approximately 9.44 trips per dwelling unit per 24-hour period. So 118 times 9.44 is just over 1,114, it's, it's actually just under that, round out to 1,114 per trips per 24-hour period, that's inclusive of the entire development. The AM, the AM peak is 0.76 is the ratio multiplier, so that estimates 90 trips occurring in the busiest hour of the seven to nine a.m. period. And then the PM peak, you see this ratio there of one, so 118 trips occurring in the busiest hour of the four to six p.m. period. The, the funny thing about the AM and PM peaks is they're over a two-hour period, but it's the busiest hour of that period, but it was explained to me by the town engineer is that it doesn't have to necessarily be from seven to eight or eight to nine, it could be from 7:15 to 8:15, anywhere in that window, but it's, it's trying to estimate the busiest hour of that period. Vehicle entrances and exits, though, are to be distributed across the three entrance points being Kern, Fairweather, and Roswell, and Roswell only serves four houses, it's a private drive connection there at Roswell, so there's not much connectivity through Roswell, it's just the four houses proposed off the end, an extension of a private drive. The latest Kern Road annual average daily traffic, or AAT count, and this is done by NCDOT, was about 7,000 trips right here, it's right at the intersection with Old Valley School Road, and it's 6,500 just beyond the subject parcel headed out towards Abington, so this is Dean Road here, and they clocked in at 300, so based on the numbers for Old Valley School Road and Limble Springs Road, and then the other number here at Kern Road and Manor Wood, I guess that's Dobson at that point, and Manor Wood, it's telling us that the traffic is moving in all directions, it's not all coming to Kern Road to Bowden Hamer, but there is, there is movement and there is capacity according to NCDOT. In response to citizen comments, I called our district engineer and talked to him about the capacity of the Kern Road. The response was that across our district, there are many two-lane roads with similar housing densities that exceed 12,000 trips per day, and so they believed that room for increased traffic on Kern Road without putting it at or above maximum capacity. So again, they reviewed this, as many of our other outside agencies did, as part of the Development Review Committee process, and we tried to incorporate their comments, because there are so many concerns about the different agencies and what they're reviewing. Today, we, we were asked to consider, to propose, to revise the plan to eliminate the creek crossing in the middle of the parcel, so that would make three separate entrance points that would not be connected to each other, that would mean approximately 92 lots would be only accessible by Kern Road, approximately 22 lots would only be accessible by Fairweather Drive, and the four lots would only be accessible by Roswell. But the UDO subdivision ordinance requires all subdivisions shall be designed to utilize interconnecting streets for consistent development pattern within the town, so staff could not support that proposal. We also think it's in the best interest of any potential residents and first responders to have multiple access points in case of an emergency, a downed tree, you know, what have you, that would prevent access through one means you want to be able to get people in and out, and first responders also in and out. As far as the watershed goes, the site is located in the East Blues watershed. There is a stream present on site, but there are no FEMA designated flood zones on the property. I know that's kind of a odd thing to think about when there, people have experienced significant water on a property, but that, just because a property's not located in a flood zone doesn't mean that there isn't water, and just because there is water doesn't mean it has to be in a flood zone, it's just, it's a, it's a characteristic and a combination of a lot of different things. So the existing pond and the stream have a 30-foot riparian buffer on either side that's to be left undisturbed. That is a state and federal regulation that we just uphold, so the 30-foot is required on either side. And, well, bless you, the site will be developed using the high-density stormwater development option, which will utilize engineered stormwater control measures to treat the stormwater prior to release via the new, two new stormwater wet ponds in the bio-retention basin. So it's also important to note that the high-density for stormwater purposes is separate from any calculation of high-density for zoning purposes. It uses the same phrase, but it's, it's in essence two very different things. Other agencies are included on the Development Review Committee process as well, that includes Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. The facility planners are sent copies, copies of all received plans, and that happens with every municipality in Forsyth County. So they get copies of all the plans in order to plan for student population estimating. They typically do not submit comments to us in return, I think that the point is more to feed them information about what could be coming, so that they are ready to anticipate what future capacity and building needs that they will need to undertake. City County Utility System, or CCUC, are sent copies of all the plans as well, and their comments included that the construction plans for water and sewer line extensions must be submitted to the plan reviewer for permitting and approval, and that's done through their portal. Water meters are purchased through the utility, and sewer cleanouts and water meters should be placed at the right-of-way line, so it's more of the technical construction details. There were no comments received from CCUC about capacity, I spoke to Courtney Driver myself today, and she said that the existing pump station on Roswell had capacity to serve this site, as well as the existing structures that are being served by that site. Many neighbors have, will remember that, that the pump station on Roswell Drive was recently constructed as a consolidation of three previously existing pump stations. She told me that those were outdated and not, not functioning well, so they had the option to either repair the existing or build one, a new one and consolidate, and they chose to build one in consolidation, so that was how the three existing came to be the one pump station. There we go, that's what I just talked about, so the sewer line survey and development will drain to the existing line that feeds the Roswell Drive pump station, and she confirmed today that they see no capacity issues with the proposed development. Staff's analysis is that Kernersville is a growing community within a growing triad area. Kernersville alone grew by 14 and a half percent, as counted by the 2020 census, and all counties within the triad have been growing over the past decade as well. This is slightly outdated, I think the state budget management and Census Office is working on getting all the nice graphs, they've got all the data out there, but I think they're working on making the, the pretty pictures. But this one was from 2019, and it shows that every, every county in the triad, Forsyth County, Gopher County, Randolph County, Davidson County, Davie County, all of those which are triad and greater triad are experiencing growth, at least keeping up with the state's population change of approximately nine and a half percent, so we are growing and our neighbors are growing as well. The RSQ zoning district allows for a range of house types by right. However, the developer is only proposing single-family detached units, and that is included in staff proposed condition number one, and it's on the site plan, so if this were to be approved, that would be the only type of housing that the developer could construct without going through a new proposal. House and architectural details and materials are similar to those existing in the area. Backslee Place Lane and Kern Road feature a mix of two-story traditional style and one-and-a-half-story cake-cod-style homes with a mix of vinyl siding and brick styles. Fairweather Drive and Cloud Peak Court have one-story brick ranch-style homes and two-story homes already, so the proposed mix of one-story and two-story houses of mixed materials are consistent with those in the area. Staff's proposed conditions number five through nine address the design, size, and details of the home to ensure that whoever is building those has to follow what was approved as part of this rezoning case. Kern Road, Fairweather Drive, and Roswell Drive are NCDOT streets. NCDOT engineers have reviewed the proposal, and they have determined that there's adequate capacity to serve the additional homes. The multiple entrance points prevent concentration of trips at one intersection and provide multiple means of entrance and exit for residents and first responders. Older residential areas developed on the north side of Kernersville have typically largely been dependent on private water, either well or community systems and individual septic systems due to them being constructed prior to the extension of public sewer. So leach field requirements for a septic system really dictated the lot size. Larger houses with more bedrooms needed larger leach fields, therefore they needed larger lots. But with the expansion of public water and sewer systems and the additional capacity to serve increases the ability to serve additional residential areas, and that is, comes with the pump station that was previously consolidated into the one pump station with capacity. Courtney stated today that, you know, if additional development came out in the area, they would have to look at, you know, expanding their, the size of their pump, but that it could be done, it would just be a matter of, at that point, how many additional houses would dictate how large that needed to be, but what is there now is adequate for what is being proposed tonight. The increased cost of development, both pre and post-pandemic, pre being the requirement for roads to be constructed a certain way with curb and gutter and sidewalks and other, you know, radius and turn elements, things like that, and then post-pandemic with just the sheer cost of materials, that factors into the scale of a subdivision. This really gets into the theory of the economy of scale. Trends nationally, statewide, and locally show us planners that proposals submitted for subdivisions with smaller lots or mixed types of residential with public infrastructure, so mixed type being some single-family, some duplex, or twin-home, just different types of units within the same proposal. Some recent ones that we've seen would be Caleb's Creek, Welden, The Villas at West Mountain, there are many others, these are just some examples that would come to mind and be readily available as a picture image in your, in your head. And the proposal does fit within the town standards for low-density residential at zero to three homes per acre. Our recommendation is approval of the motion to amend the unified development ordinance of the town by rezoning the property in the case K 793 from RS 20 to RSQC, and we find that it's consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, and it's both reasonable and in the public interest, because they've applied for the conditional use district to allow architectural standards to be applied, which ensures that the development addresses the development plan's goal the development plan's goal of establishing Kernersville as a unique, high-quality community within the triad. The petitioner has also requested the conditional use district to allow the specific site plan to be considered. This addresses the transitional character of the area with the additional buffering and the berms and also the additional protection to the adjacent properties. The petitioner's submitted design incorporates watershed protection and will provide a sensitive landscape plan to help improve the natural environment while providing a buffer to adjacent properties. So again, all of that area along the, the existing pond, the existing streams have to remain natural. They're shown on the plan to remain natural. And then the regulations from the state and the federal government also ensure that that 30-foot buffer is maintained on either side. Staff is also recommending approval of the site plan with the conditions as presented in the staff report with a modification to condition number 11 regarding the berm specifying the size as previously shown. And with that, I will take any questions.
Any questions to staff at this point?
I have one question. Catherine, I'm sorry, Nathan, if you want to go ahead, it's fine.
No, no, go ahead.
I, I know the density close by is similar with the RS12. I'm wondering, do you guys know what the density is of Abington? Which is on the north side on this, of Kerner Road?
I don't have that information. I reached out to a staff planner with the City County Planning Office to see if I could obtain the information regarding the total number of units in the area, as well as how many permits they've issued in the past five years out there, just to kind of see what the scale was. I know some of those houses have been out there for quite some time, but I know that they've also, it's also been growing out there, but I don't have that density information on hand.
Yeah, I was just curious because it seems there's a ton of houses in that area and it seems like the density would be very similar, I, I think. Thank you.
The zoning out there, I did look into this. The zoning with Abington is RS30. And so RS20 is already a higher density than RS30. Abington, to my knowledge, another on a community well with community water. I think some of them, if not all of them, may be on private sewer, but I'm not sure on that. And I think that has driven some of the lot size, but as far as their actual number density, I don't have that calculation since it's outside of our jurisdiction and I didn't hear back from the county.
Yeah, you're, you're correct. I think they're on private sewer and, and water, I believe. But anyway, well, thanks for the information.
All right. Couple of questions for you. First of all, on Kerner Road, where this development is supposed to be hooked up, have they considered putting a, a roundabout there? Or trying to cut down the speed of the people flying down Kerner Road for a little bit of safety of everybody? I mean, it wouldn't take up a whole lot much more land than what the turn lanes would.
DOT is the one that's dictating the turn lane. So that was their specific comment as part of reviewing the proposal. When I talked to one of their engineers about the capacity of the road and the, and the plan that's been submitted and they had reviewed, they said part of the way that they are addressing these higher-density developments that are occurring in areas that were previously very rural are through the installation of turn lanes. So he thinks that the issues that the neighbors have raised with traffic and backups and things like that are going to be addressed over time as development occurs with the installation of the turn lanes. So they didn't feel that a roundabout was necessary at DOT and Kerner Road is a DOT street. So I would have to defer to them about whether anything else was warranted.
All right, thank you. Next question. End of Fairweather. It drops off pretty good there. I presume that they're going to have to have a culvert under the road that they put there. So, you know, we have a number of developments in the area where things are undersized, and so we have places that get flooded. And I just want to make sure that the culvert that they put under the road is probably twice the size as regularly engineered because of potential flooding conditions, because they're going to be essentially building a dam there for the natural water flow.
Sure. So I don't, the level of detail that you're asking about is not required for the conditional district rezoning. So I know that the developers are on the call and I'm sure they're hearing your concerns, but as far as specific numbers and size, that's not required at this level, but would be reviewed when construction plans are submitted after the plan, you know, if it were to be reviewed, that's the next step. And that's where we get into the nitty-gritty details of, okay, exactly how big does it need to be to accommodate the development and the water?
Yes, you remember that up along County Line Road, the people were up there talking about flooding? And I went up there and looked and not the, the first development, that was the main bonus of the development off of County Line Road, but the next one down, I think it might actually be in Guilford County. The culverts there are on the small side, considering how many, probably thousands of acres of water surface is there. And that's why they have flooding problems, because it was undersized. And when we look at the last month, when we were talking about the project that was turned down across the interstate from the hospital, again, flooding because of things not being properly taken care of ahead of time. So I'm just trying to make sure that we have somebody look at this to prevent that from happening where it hasn't happened before.
Sure, I think that's understandable.
Oh, last question. When they were putting the sewer lines in, in Hidden Hills, they did a lot of dynamiting. How much dynamiting do you think is going to be needed for putting the sewer lines in over there? Because we have houses in Hidden Hills that were damaged by it.
So I don't, I understand your concern, and Courtney Driver did echo some of the issues with the, the rock that was unanticipated when they were doing the sewer work. What would be required on that site, I, I couldn't speak to. But I'm sure your comments are, are being noted by the applicant. He, they are on the call tonight.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions to staff at this point? Go ahead, Chris.
Sorry. Catherine, can you explain a little bit about this? If we have a great big pump station, what is this proposed bio cell for the four homes on the backside of Roswell?
That's, that's a stormwater, it's a different type of stormwater pond. It's not related. The pump station only serves sanitary sewer.
Yeah, when I, when I Google bio, had their bio cell, that's what comes up is a replacement for a pretreatment of sewage before it goes to a pump station or something like that.
No, that's not what they're proposing. It's a stormwater device only. So yeah, that was noted in, in the watershed section on your staff report too. So sanitary sewer is going to stay piped and going to go to the pump station. And that biosol that you're referencing is just for groundwater, stormwater.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions to staff?
One more question. Where is the closest RSQ-C in the area to this development? I mean, everything else I see is a RS20 or RS12.
It's Julian Pond. It's across the Pine Grove Road from North Lake.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions to staff?
What was her answer to that? I didn't understand it.
It's at Julian Pond. It's the neighborhood across Pine Grove Road from North Lake.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Jim, this is Luanne. So Catherine, why are we, why are we requesting RSQ-C if we're only, the developers only proposing single-family?
The RSQ zoning district allows multiple types of housing by right. So if the property were already zoned to that, then someone could develop it in a variety of different ways. They are proposing RSQ for, I think, some of the setback and lot width configurations. Most of the lots greatly exceed the minimum, but I think that's, that was the driving reason behind the applicant's choice. I'll let them speak more to, to that. But with the conditional use district, that the dash C part at the end, that limits the use only to single-family. So it could only be constructed as a single-family, even though the zoning district allows other things. This would prevent any of those other types.
Okay. Other questions?
I have one other question. Catherine, is the petitioner Barry Siegel, is this the same gentleman and company that is responsible for the apartments on Old Winston Road beside of the car museum?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, other questions?
I just have one question.
Go ahead, Jim.
We've talked in the past about the Macy Grove Road extension, Kernersville Loop. Is that coming in through here somewhere?
Yes, that will, the Macy Grove extension will come up to Pine Grove there, the gas station, and then we will kind of come down Lible Springs Road to Kerner Road.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, one last question. So Catherine, if, if this, if this developer, let's say, let's say they sold this property to somebody else, they couldn't come back without going through this process again to put triplexes, quadruplexes, duplexes in this area?
That is correct. That would not be something that we could permit under the minor staff change. Minor staff change only allows us to generally go down in density or to like just rearrange things on the site with no net change to anything. So if it were proposed to increase either in the type of housing, in the density beyond what's shown now, anything, any change that's not a reduction or just a rearrangement would require going through this whole process with notification, planning board meeting, and Board of Alderman meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay. I, I want to make a quick statement here, especially for those who are joining us over the internet. And it's more about what the purpose of the planning board is in this case. Our job now is to determine whether this proposal meets the land use plan and unified development ordinance and to make a recommendation to the Board of Alderman. So that's what we are here to do tonight, just so everybody understands what the purpose of the planning board is. Okay? Okay. We'll turn it over to Beth now for those who are in favor of the petition.
Jim, could you make a statement about not repeating what the other caller may have said or like you have in the past?
Sure. Says, "When speaking, please be concise and avoid repeating information already shared by other speakers." The people on this board are, understand when you say you're against this part of it. Please don't get up and say you're against it too. We understand what it is. So it will help all of us just not to have everything repeated all the way around. Okay? Beth, we ready for those in favor of the petition?
Yes, we have Amanda in favor, and she needs to unmute herself.
Okay, let me ask one more thing before we go. Each speaker, if you would, when you start, state your name and address for the record, please. Go ahead, Amanda.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. My name is Amanda Williams, and I actually have in the same room with me Barry Siegel and Bob Woodruff. So there, Beth, there's no reason to do all three of us separate roll in one room together. And if it's okay with you, I'll let Barry start and then I can go after him and Bob as well.
Or alternatively, they can certainly join in and add and clarify and answer any questions. As you know, the RS20 zoning district is the zoning district of many of the properties around this particular tract of land owned by Larry and Betty Callahan. And that particular district basically RS20, okay, required a 20,000 square foot lot, which is essentially required, as mentioned earlier, to, in order to accommodate the primary and the backup, the backup septic fields, okay, for houses that had to be serviced by septic systems simply because public sewer was not available. Same time, some of the subdivisions did not have, particularly the RS30, did not have city or county water, and hence they had to not only locate the septic system onsite, but also a well. And in order to comply with the state guidelines, there has to be separation between them and then ample room for the backup systems on the septic, okay, whether it be on that lot or offsite in order to handle situations in the event of a septic failure, failure. Okay, now that public sewer is available, virtually all towns are requiring, all cities are requiring that developers tie onto the existing sewer systems, the public sewer systems, and basically will not permit the septic fields when in fact public sewer is available. The town of Kernersville as well as the city of Greensburg, City of High Point, Winston Salem, all have certain development standards and requirements, okay, for the development within their cities and within their jurisdictions. These require, as you know, curb and gutter, streets, pay streets, sidewalks, and in many cases, you know, sidewalks on both sides and wide streets. And in, on top of that, you have all of the state and the federal regulations which have continued to, been added to every single year with the result of the fact that there are natural lake bodies that you can no longer drain. They must be preserved, buffers around the ponds or the lake's edge, buffers along the creeks, and then the well as the treatment of, of the stormwater going into these retention ponds. The development of what we call loctural shelves, which have made these ponds wider and wider. And so all of these regulations coupled with the additional regulations as they relate to erosion control has continued to add to the cost of development, which has certainly made housing less and less affordable and has placed a tremendous cost burden on the cost of, of developing a single-family subdivision. And in particular, when you have to tie one road to the other, okay, by going ahead and increasing the, the size of a lot, which will increase the width of a lot, which will increase a lot of the other costs, then the cost of that development just continues to add on to the cost of that particular lot. And the net result is at some point, you can no longer afford to develop a lot, okay, if in fact you must comply with all of the regs, unless in fact you feel like you can build million-dollar homes on multi-acre lots. The question has been asked here by some of the neighbors, you know, how many lots do you think you might be looking at if, if you did this development as an RS20 versus the proposed request of the RSQC? And I think the answer there is perhaps from the 118, we may have 65 or 70 lots. Unfortunately, the development costs don't go down. And while the landlord may agree to take a little bit of a whack. And while the landlord may agree to take a little bit of a less of the purchase price for the property, the cost of development does not go down. It's going to cost the same for curb and gutter. It's going to cost the same for the asphalt roads. It's going to cost the same for the water lines, sewer lines, the storm sewer lines and all that. So very quickly, you find yourself, okay, in basically maybe having a nice development on paper, but practically speaking, homes that are totally beyond the cost and totally beyond affordability. And I was asked, okay, where do I think those costs of those lots would be? And my honest opinion on that, you'd be in excess of over $100,000 per lot, okay, in order to do that. And even in today's world, unfortunately, with the cost of ducted line, the cost of copper, the cost of concrete, the cost of asphalt, all of which has climbed as well as the cost to put sidewalks on both sides and so forth, so on. Even, okay, under the RSQ and the 118 lots that are shown here, we are going to be probably over $70,000 a lot, just in terms of the lot cost for the lot improvement, the engineering, the fees, and to comply with all the regulations. Just the cost to build the turn lanes, okay, on Kerner's Road. Typically require for right turn, left turn, okay, the widening that you, you have to do over $300,000, $350,000 typically. It's what you may end up spending just for the turn lanes. All right, so to give you just an idea, so, so, you know, those are unfortunately the, the realities of the economics. And then some of the other questions were, that were raised to us, well, if you do an RS12, right, what do you think you're going to look at, okay, in terms of number of lots? We had discussion this morning with a couple of the neighbors and we looked at that and we kind of talked about it. And without having a detailed plan, we said, you know, we may have six lots left, six lots less, okay, than what we're proposing. But what's going to happen is we're going to lose the burn and we're going to lose so much of the other open space. And we'll try to find a way to take that extra footage and put it in each of the lots and still comply with the curvatures required of the roads. But somewhere in that process, something has got to give. And that's probably a combination of number of lots, which increases the cost because instead of buying by 118, we're now dividing, for argument's sake, by 112 or 110, maybe for an RS12. But we'll lose the burn, right? We'll lose some of the open space, right? And, you know, so you got to sit there and look at the trade-off and what do we, what do we provide? Well, we provide maybe six lots less, right? But, okay, we lose some of the other things that we felt were very important. And we felt that the burn along Kerner Road was very, very important to provide, okay, this landscaping feature along Kerner Road to provide privacy for the folks that will have this back of the Kerner Road in terms of the fact that there would be a landscape burn, at least six foot tall, not counting the planting on it, okay, and substantial width. There's a lot of misunderstanding. I know Catherine has clarified that, that we are not proposing duplexes. We are not proposing quadplexes, okay, that they are all single-family, okay, they are all four-sell. There has been a question as, okay, what type of price range do you think you're looking at? Well, and we have answered that as honestly as we can based upon, we're, okay, similar developments being done by Royal Homes in North Carolina, who is a home builder for this particular development. Right? And the answer is probably 325,000 to about 375,000, $400,000 in today's world in terms of, of those home prices. Now, the homes that we are proposing backing up to the Hidden Hills subdivision, there's been some discussion about that and, and there, there was a little bit of ambiguity in the letter that I sent out, okay, to the folks, but has been certainly clarified in the staff report in that those are single fam, uh, single-family, one-story homes. They would be backing up to Hidden Lakes. The concept there is that we are looking at more of a plan-type development. They will be similar in characteristics. The exterior of the homes would be maintained by a homeowner association. The grounds would be being maintained by the homeowner association. And we virtually view those as basically residents and homes that could be purchased by those we might call empty nesters, okay, retired folks, folks that are not necessarily having many children, okay, that perhaps want a, a larger house or two-story house or something of that sort. And the other thing I think that is important on, on those is the fact that if you look closely at the grading plant, you will see that what is proposed is the finish elevation of those pads and hence the finish floor elevation is approximately six feet, okay, and it varies a little bit, six feet below the elevation of the rear lots that back up to Hidden Lakes. Add to that a six-foot vinyl fence, okay, those homes basically have about a 12-foot, okay, privacy if you wish. So you will not be looking in, if you were hidden in lakes, you would not be looking into the windows of those homes or for that matter, looking into those backyards and vice versa. And so there's been a lot of discussion, okay, as to what impact will this development have on my home value? And I am down for argument's sake in Hidden Hills, I am down in Abington, I am down somewhere else. I am concerned, expressed to us, that this is going to devalue, okay, my house because you're building houses on smaller lots, right? I would argue that it would be to the contrary, that there will be without question people that will not buy these homes because they want larger lots, right? But a lot of people will look at these homes and say, you know, this is my lifestyle. This is the lifestyle that I'm looking for. I don't want to maintain half an acre. I don't want to maintain 30,000 feet of yard. I want to have sidewalks. I want to be able to walk down the street. I, I want to have this little variation in, okay, the home style that I can find down the street. Those that seek, okay, larger lots can look at this and say, you know what? For about the same number of dollars or even a little bit more or a little bit less, I can go down the street and I can buy a 20,000 square foot lot, okay? Granted, the house is a little bit older, but I'd rather have that. So we, we tend to think by, by doing this, not only do we provide some variety, okay, but we also basically will not be competing with the existing subdivisions such as Hidden Hills that we're putting out an extra 100 or 80 or 90 homes or whatever it may be that is competition. This is kind of virtually a, a different part. So there's been a lot of discussion, okay, and one of the, the, the points have been connectivity, right? Folks in the Hidden Hills would rather not, and, and particular Fairweather Street would not, would prefer that this subdivision not be connected. They are concerned about the traffic from this development working its way through Fairweather Drive through their particular subdivision. We've shared in our conversations this morning with some of the, the members of, of the community that if in fact the planning board, if in fact the, the Board of Alderman, okay, desired and wished, okay, that we go ahead and try to address their concern by basically providing a cul-de-sac, okay, at the end of these single-family homes such that we would not have the connectivity between Fairweather and Kerner Road, such that the, the lots, if you look at your plan from lots 93 to 114, only came out Fairweather Drive, okay, we would be open to that. In the same way, we would provide the connectivity, okay, excuse me, remove that connectivity, but only have the access back out to Kerner Road, okay, on the other side of the creek. This certainly would remove, okay, the need for the culvert underneath the creek. Frankly, we would be supportive of that if in fact the planning board was supportive of that and if in fact the Board of Alderman would support that. Part of that, then, discussions got to go to how do you handle, okay, emergency access? And we've looked at that and we've had some conversations. And we think that there are ways to handle that emergency access to have another connectivity back to Kerner Road. That is something we're prepared to go ahead, have additional discussions on, modify the plan accordingly. Our understanding, we'll let, of course, the, the opposition speak to that. But we do understand that that will address some of the concerns raised by the opposition, not all the concerns. One of the other concerns is, of course, the number of houses and the size of the lots, and we've talked about that. One of the other concerns, of course, always raised is, is the stormwater runoff. And I know the planning board members are very familiar with the requirements by the state, okay, that have to be basically monitored by the town and their stormwater director, Chris Jensen and his group, as to how we handle the stormwater runoff to protect that, okay? And so we, we think those are engineering discussions. We think the, the size of the culvert is in fact certainly an engineering discussion. We are confident that our engineers and Chris Jensen, who is a very, very capable stormwater engineer with the town, will certainly address that to make sure there are no concerns. I wouldn't like to let Bob and Amanda jump in here real quick. There was a discussion earlier this afternoon with Catherine with regard to some of the building design and site plan. And there was a proposal to try to clarify that. I know Catherine has talked about the burn. And we've given Catherine some proposed modified language, okay, on the building design and the site plan. And Bob, if there's anything you'd like to say, please correct it.
Oh, good. So I'm Bob Woodard. I'm the, uh, basically the manager for Royal Homes of North Carolina. We did make these two proposed changes for the, the product. Item six, letter F, it was concerning some elevation details that were going to be on all sides of the home. We wanted to propose that shutters be installed on the south side of the homes located on lots 47, 48, 59, and 60. That is the side of the homes that would face the property to the south of that. And then we would install shutters on the rear windows of the homes located on lots 60 through 66 and lots 1 through 7. Those were the homes that would, the rear of the home would face Kerner Road. The staff had had some concerns about dressing up the, the rear elevations of the homes. We did make a note about the one-story homes on lots 93 through 102. Should not require shutters installed on the rear homes, as Barry mentioned earlier. Those homes sit well below the grade of the existing homes. And we'll have a six-foot privacy fence there that would effectively block the view of the rear of those homes. We also requested to delete item eight, which was talking about elevations and the repetition of elevations in the subdivision. We would propose that no two elevations with identical windows and door design be constructed within three lots of one another directly across the street from each other. We do that in our existing neighborhoods we're working in now to keep the streets scape from being repetitive. When we do have a repeat of an elevation somewhere else further down the road, we require those elevations to choose different colors of the brick siding, shake and so forth. On the one-story homes located on lots 93 through 114 in the rear, we would be alternating the elevations between elevation A and B for the Elon Plan, just to kind of keep a continuity because they're, they're, they're all the same house type. And like Barry said earlier, those would be part of a separate HOA. Those man, those grounds would be manicured by the HOA and the outside maintenance would be taken care of by the HOA as well.
So, you know, just to add one little thing to whatever Barry and Bob have said, you know, we've spoken with the neighbors. We're still very open to talking to any of the neighbors that are willing to call or we're meeting person or any of that. And so I just wanted to put that out there for everybody. You know, we've had some great discussions and would like to continue those discussions. One clarification I'd like to make, there was a rumor kind of out there that what Royal Homes was proposing was similar to what's built in Vernon Farms. And I just want to make that clarification that that is not the case. That Vernon Farms was not developed by Royal Homes and what is existing out there today is not Royal Homes product. Royal Homes is actually, we are doing a brand-new, in-the-back-of-Vernon-farms phase for Royal Homes. Those houses are still under construction today. So if somebody goes into Vernon Farms and just pulls in off of Kernersville Road or Lindell Road, that is not a representation of Royal. And they would have to drive all the way through the subdivision and through two traffic circles to get to back where Royal is. Royal Homes did Glenstone in Kernersville. They just, we've just completed a development called Deerfield Crossing off of Bain Road in Polfax, which is honestly the best representation of this product and exactly what we're talking about here. And then, so we mentioned that to some neighbors this morning. And then we strongly just encourage those that have any concerns to reach out to Barry, myself, or Bob. We're more than willing to answer any questions and the, the planning board may have and as well as address any concerns of the neighbors.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay. Beth, do we have anyone else who was speaking in favor of the petition?
Yes, sir. If Larry could unmute himself.
Just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Larry Callahan. I am the present owner of the property. I live at 2551 Rin Road, Kernersville, North Carolina.
Okay. Thank you, Larry.
I will be very short. In the time I have owned the land, since actually day one, I have been contacted by numerous developers, all of whom wanted to build much cheaper homes. I am a surveyor in Kernersville, been here for 42 years. So I know just about every home builder, tract builder, et cetera. Mr. Siegel was chosen because I know he builds a much higher quality home and I believe so strongly that he will do the best development on this land. That I took a considerable less amount of money than was offered previously in order to work with him to create something that I would be proud of. The fact that he is keeping over one-third of the land in natural state is very commendable and should be appreciated by the surrounding community. There will be ample trees, private berms, and fencing. I believe it would be impossible to find another developer and builder who could do as much in preserving the area while providing the much-needed homes in this price range. Therefore, I support the rezoning of this property. Therefore, I support the rezoning of this property. Now, I'm going off of my prepared speech and just say this. I have family that adjoins this property, and I have tried very hard to pick someone that will build something that will not be intrusive to my family and something that they can be proud of. Yes, they would all like for me to leave it just as it is, but I can no longer look after the property. I'm 74 years old, so something is going to have to be done with the property. And I think Mr. Siegel is the very best choice in this matter. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Larry. Any questions? Turn your mic on, Nathan. Turn your mic on. Turn your mic on.
I, I, right. See, Jim, it was saying I was muted by the org, the, uh, somebody on that end. Okay. Uh, going back, talking about the stormwater, uh, just for the stormwater engineer part, uh, living not too far from where this development is going to be going in, I will tell you that I have seen a number of times with my wonderful wife as my weather person, where we have, uh, pretty heavy storms here of, of rain, where I've seen three to five inches of rain in under two hours. So that's almost like a little flash flood here, and so that, that needs to be remembered when they're putting the, uh, the culverts in.
Okay. Thank you, Nathan. Catherine, has the staff reviewed the, the change in condition six and elimination of condition eight?
We got that this afternoon and have not had a chance to sit down and discuss it as staff, but part of the reason is before you tonight is that, you know, we've put out what we feel is appropriate, um, and we've discussed the change to the berm, and we agree with that. Uh, so you guys are the ones making the recommendations to the Aldermen, so we figured, you know, we'll just leave the decision and the recommendation up to Planning Board. Some of the conditions are similar to ones that we have applied in other areas, such as Caleb's Creek, uh, so they're not out of the question for the area. Um, but as to whether or not you feel the staff report conditions should be amended or recommended to be amended, um, that will leave that up to Planning Board.
Okay. Thank you, Kelly. You know what else was to speak in favor of the petition?
Chairman Waddell, we don't have anybody else.
Okay. Uh, anyone who was to speak in opposition?
The first person would be TJ if he could unmute himself.
Hey, can you hear me? Hey, how's everybody doing tonight? Hope you guys are well. Um, I am TJ Saltman. I live at 174 Rockford Road, Kernersville, North Carolina. Um, I'd just like to begin this by pointing out that the first three speakers in favor of the plan, Bob, Amanda, and Barry, did not give out their addresses as requested. Therefore, it can be assumed that they aren't affected residents. Um, I, I'll go ahead and begin. The proposal, quite frankly, does not conform to Kernersville's development plan. On page two of the Kernersville Development Plan, they say, quote, "Without growth, management efforts Kernersville will become indistinguishable from the surrounding encroaching urban areas." Proposal K793 represents the encroaching urban areas that town planners have been warning us from and working hard to avoid for decades. According to page 11 in K793's staff report proposal, quote, "Because of Kernersville's quality environment, people moving to the triad are choosing to live in Kernersville because of appreciation of the same things that attract current residents." New zoning does not conform to, one, the same things that attracted current residents, which are less intense neighborhoods, and, two, the fact that Kernersville has historically rejected development proposals that do not contribute to the town's expressly stated goals of, quote, "Maintaining Kernersville's small-town atmosphere and establishing Kernersville as a unique, high-quality community." That was taken from page 20 of the TOK Growth and Data Report published September, um, of this year. The principle of conformity is extremely important from a real estate perspective, and a separate zoning surrounded by RS20 does not conform to the existing neighborhood. The principle of conformity states that conformity to land use objectives contributes to economic stability in a residential community. This is why homes are built in the same style as the other properties in that same area, because the values will go up. If property values increase, then tax value also increases, which is a benefit to the community. By the admission of the submitted staff report, the development will not conform to the surrounding neighborhoods in housing style, lot size, or access to utilities only by the number of stories per home. The proposed staff report also mentions that growing pains must be managed without considering that there are already 4,900 homes approved in Kernersville that have not yet been constructed. An engineer from Frohling and Robertson Incorporated noted in April 10th, 2021, a report to the Forsyth County CCUC that they observed road flexes loaded construction vehicles pass over Rockford Road, which is intended to be on, quote, "The Collector Road for Development Access." The road would not pass the stress test in April 2021. There have been no further studies made on Rockford Road, which was repaid three years ago in April 2018, is already severely damaged from the Roswell Sewer Lift Project, and is currently lowest priority to be repaid by the NC DOT. It is important to note also that the NC DOT has not executed a stress test on Rockford Road and is unable to handle the stress of heavy machine traffic. There have also been no studies made on Cliffwood Road either, which is another access point. Since Roswell Drive is private and only serves four homes, you're really looking at only the two access points. The staff proposal is purposely misleading in defining its density. It fails to mention that much of the area is unbuildable due to drainage issues and that in some areas, single-family homes are built on 10-acre lots. These homes do not conform to existing homes that will literally be in the backyard, in some instances being five new homes in the backyard of one existing home. You can see that on, um, the map on page two at Cloud Peak Lot 86. The drainage issues are severe, and building along these areas negates the promise of, quote, "Watershed protection to," quote, "improve the natural environment," as made on page three of the Kernersville Development Plan. Also on page three of the Kernersville Development Plan, the town has emphasized the goal to, quote, "Enhance Kernersville's small-town atmosphere, which would be instantly extinguished with high-density housing in rural areas." Included on page three is the goal to improve the natural environment, which includes wildlife habitat. It is safe to say that replacing 46 acres of land with sewage and asphalt does nothing to protect natural environment or wildlife habitat. The wording of the staff proposal is also misleading. There's a possibility for development of the area that conforms to existing neighborhoods while also preserving the town of Kernersville's expressly stated goals of, quote, "Maintaining Kernersville's small-town atmosphere and establishing Kernersville as a unique, high-quality community," from page 20 of the TOK Growth and Data Report published September 2021. Development can be made in the same manner surrounding areas with larger lot sizes and less density in areas where there is construction. Also, it is important to note that the staff proposal creates bias by calling large lot sizes antiquated. This is not only unjust to citizens, but it's simply not true. Larry and Betty Callahan, who spoke early, um, they're real estate experts who own the proposed land and are partnered in Kerner Road Partners LLC. They live on a 50-acre lot. Barry Siegel, who also spoke, is a real estate expert and proposed developer who lives in a house that's over 5,000 square feet that's seeded on a 91-acre lot. The very people proposing the rezoning ordinance are all real estate professional experts who value large wooded lots themselves. Seventy-five percent of the town of Kernersville Planning Board members, you guys, live in RS21 zoned areas. It should also be pointed out that if development costs don't change, that only affects developers. That doesn't negatively affect the actual residents of the area. It is unethical for local government to coddle the pockets of developers. If their profit margin isn't high enough, they are free to take their business elsewhere. In fact, it should be remembered that developers' profit doesn't fall in any scope of city planning. If developers are willing to address traffic through Hidden Hills, as Barry Siegel mentioned, then it is important that they draft a new map and propose the idea again rather than taking their word for it. If they are willing to meet with neighbors, as Amanda said, then this request should be denied so they can propose it after those meetings. Callahan has acknowledged that the area is going to be developed for neighborhood regardless. This rezoning is only to benefit investors and no one else. It is designed to maximize profit and place more strain on community resources. There is nothing good for the town of Kernersville to place urban-type development in the center of an RS20 zone. It directly negates the Kernersville Development Plan that city planners are charged with upholding. The surrounding area is not intended at any point to accommodate starting housing just so a handful of people can make an extra buck. I refuse to give up on my small-town community and pay for resources that they intend to exploit when they are going to develop no matter what. They can either conform to the existing area or they can develop elsewhere. There's no sensible logic to give into the unreasonable demands of greedy individuals. This is, simply put, a parasitic proposal that feeds off the money, atmosphere, and lifeblood of existing residents. It would be grossly unethical to allow wealthy developers to destroy every aspect that brought current residents to the area and leave an existing community to shoulder the burden that they create. Approving rezoning K793 would not only directly negate the expressed goals of Kernersville's development plan, but it would also be a slap in the face to every resident who moved here and invested their lives in this community because they valued and trusted this plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next person we have is Deborah Cash. If she could unmute herself.
Hi, good evening. Um, my husband is also here, uh, James Hadley Cash. I'm going to have, uh, him present his, uh, his information first, and then I'll follow up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening to us this evening.
Hi, uh, can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
This is James Hadley Cash. I live on 1039 Fairweather Drive, um, on the exact opposite end of Fairweather from where the development would be coming into Fairweather Drive. Um, I have serious concerns as far as the safety of more traffic coming into, uh, the Rockford Road via Fairweather. Um, we have an unbelievable number of people that walk their dogs or just go out for morning or afternoon or evening strolls. Um, it, yeah, it, it's almost impossible to go out and not see somebody walking up and down the streets, uh, during almost any time of day or night. Um, if you take Fairweather from the proposed development, uh, and it stops at Rockford Road, you've only got a choice to get out of going left on Rockford or right on Rockford. If you go left on Rockford, you go about a block and a half, and the road drops into a blind, off of a hill down into a blind low area. I mean, it drops within 100 feet, about 50 feet down. Um, at the bottom of that, uh, big drop-off is where there's a community swimming pool. And in the summertime, all day long, that, that, there's children coming and going with their families for that community pool. And I have to go, that's the way I normally choose to come in off of Piney Grove, and I turn on Rockford. And the sun in the morning, when you're trying to leave, the sun is in your eyes completely as you're driving up Rockford Road to get on Fairweather. And as I come in in the evening, the sun's on the exact opposite side, and as you go up the hill past the swimming pool on, uh, Rockford Road, the sun's shining, you know, directly in your eyes. You've literally got to go about five to 10 miles an hour to feel safe that somebody out walking their dog out walking isn't going to get hit by you. Um, it's, it's already... It's already a worrisome situation just with the traffic down. And if new traffic gets dumped onto Rockford on Fairweather, uh, it's, it's, it's going to be a serious, uh, safety issue. You turn right going the other way off Fairweather to get out on Rockford, there's a blind curve about 100 feet to your right, and it makes a 90-degree to go up the hill, and that's also a, a major area where traffic, you know, has to slow down or it's going to be a major issue. My main concern with this development, uh, is it coming in on Fairweather Drive into Hidden Hills. Um, I, I hope that you guys will seriously consider, um, the safety issues of that additional traffic. I'm not sure I understood what was said as far as the developer being open to the idea of restricting traffic coming into Fairweather. Was he saying they would, they were open to the option of not coming in at all on Fairweather or only shutting those 22 houses that are on the back end and making it so only those houses would come into Fairweather? Which, which was it, or what exactly was that provision they said they were open to? Can, can somebody answer that?
Apparently not.
Nope. Oh, okay. All right. Um, in addition to, you know, to what we've already talked about, um, the, the question was asked, why rezoned RSQC? And the answer that I heard the presenter give was, well, because land use... Because something is allowed by land use doesn't mean it's a good idea. And the amount of traffic that would both be coming through Hidden Hills and be piling up when you turn right on Piney Grove to go into town, or turn left on Kerner Road, uh, to go into town. When you go to, uh, on Piney Grove, uh, Piney Grove Middle School, it's already backed-up traffic, uh, in the morning. If you turn the other way of Piney Grove to go away, it's backed-up traffic where Piney Grove Elementary is. And adding a bunch more traffic to that, uh, it's not what homeowners that live out here envisioned when they were buying homes in an RS20 subdivision. So I hope you will seriously consider, um, whether it's a good idea to change from the RS20 current status of all the art homes in this area. Thank you for your time.
And, uh, thank you, honey. Um, I just have one, one other point, uh, just to keep it brief, um, since a lot of the other points have already been missed. But, um, when you look, and I know many of you are familiar with this area and, and live in it yourselves, um, our streets here in Hidden Hills do not have sidewalks. So when people are walking, and, uh, anybody who's familiar with this area, as my husband said, they, the kids are out on bicycles and tricycles, and the dogs are being walked, and everybody is in the street, um, and there are no sidewalks. So, so that is a huge safety concern when you're looking at adding in over 200 vehicles a day, uh, with multiple trips going in and coming out. So, um, so that is just a point to be considered as well, just from a pure safety perspective. And that's all I had to add on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next person is Deborah Sorrell. If you could unmute your phone, please.
Um, my name is Deborah Sorrell. My husband's name is Stephen. Um, we've lived at 1125 Kerner Road for 40 years, and our property is adjacent to the south side of the proposed site plan off of Kerner Road. Um, if you look at the plan, our property is, um, the lots 60, 59, 48, and 47, and the corresponding cul-de-sacs that are shown. Um, we believe that more time is needed for public comments on this docket for both the planning board's review and consideration of preliminary subdivision plan, and certainly prior to a Board of Alderman decision. For example, from the information we have so far and looking at the subdivision plan, it's unclear if we can make a safe turn to the left on the Kerner Road. It's, it's very hard to tell from the limited information that we have. We've got a private driveway, so, um, it's the left turn that mostly concerns me. Um, the other information I'm going to talk about is if this high-density, and when I say high-density, I'm talking about minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, is approved. Um, we wanted some considerations for our property. Um, we have a concern that the subdivision plan adjacent to our property does not adequately insulate us for water runoff, noise, privacy, all of the things... all of the things that, you know, whether for the actual owners and also for us. Now, we understand certainly that there's storm water runoff in the plans, but sometimes those are exceeded. And we have a concern to make sure that the water that comes off of these sidewalks and roads and roofs is adequately directed east rather than south toward our property. What we are asking for consideration, could we have some type of buffer? If not a berm, at least some buffering space with a privacy fence or something that's included? And instead of us having to incur all of the expense? Certainly, I request, if you look at page three of the Kernersville Planning Staff Report, it gives examples of the buffers on all of the other properties that have homes adjacent. So ours appears to be the only one that doesn't have any type of buffering. And I certainly realize that, you know, that's consistent with the UDO, but we would like consideration because this is a lot of nothing but roofs and sidewalks. The second consideration, you really have to look at the plan again. And this is something that we're just asking for consideration. Again, we have not had time to look and see if it's even realistic or helpful or anything else. But there is Street C. And Street C has a turnaround in between lots 48 and 47. And we wanted to explore the possibility of a stub just in case for future access. But I will, you know, certainly say neither me or my husband want to be included in any annexing. We don't want to be part of the Kernersville extension of their city limits. And the other thing, you know, I just want to say very clearly that by all accounts, Barry Siegel is a reputable businessman and we respect his petition. And thank you all for your attention and our request. I think it's, you know, to reiterate that what's most important to us is that we have some insulation from stormwater runoff, noise, light, and certainly privacy. I also want to say, after I submitted the information, excuse me, to Catherine, and only after that did this situation come up about not crossing the creek and all of those things, talking about fire and rescue. So I have not been able to speak to that and would like to have certainly more discussions with the appropriate people should that be taken because it will impact our property once again. So thank you for your time and certainly won't repeat any of the stuff that's already given. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
The next person is Michael Fairclough.
Hello and thank you for your time. I do appreciate you guys hearing all of us out tonight. My main concern, well, let me start, is-
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sorry, sorry, sorry. It's 187 Vancouver Court and it is Michael Fairclough.
Okay, thank you.
So basically, my wife and I own the five acres. We have two lots, so we are 187 and zero Vancouver Court. We own the five acres that adjoins this proposed subdivision to the east. We submitted video to Ms. Catherine Garner that you guys should have had access to, I do believe, at least I hope, that basically shows the current situation when we have a heavy rain. I don't know if you guys can see those now or have seen them, but basically, yeah, they're on screen now. That video is actually taken from a neighbor's property of water coming down from the subdivision above us down Blighs there at that, and then coming across the back of our property. He's shooting from his deck and the playground you can see there, it's about underwater, is right there in my backyard. It's a dry creek bed and for most of the time, it's a great place for the kids to play. But there, you can tell, there's tremendous amount of water that moves through here. And the next video will show was actually taken from my backyard. Actually, no, this is the 12 to 15-foot drop-off in the edge of the woods back there. This has been eroding away for years. And previous owners have tried to pour concrete in the area where the water's pouring over right there to stop trees from falling into that. We had some trees that pulled out of there, turned around and pressed against the bank to try to hold this up. The pipe you see right there is from an old stormwater, or not a stormwater, but a retention pond is what we were told by some of the neighbors. That was in the back of our property years ago when the subdivision was being built. They pretty much disconnected all of that and that pipe runs nothing. But you can see water does come from below it every once in a while. But, um, and basically, right now, that's about 20 feet from the property line between us and where this proposed subdivision is going to go. It pretty much drops down through there and runs out through the rest of a dry creek bed down to a string below. Again, my main concern is how that water is going to be handled because I've purchased permits, they're in place. I'm soon to expand my septic system because my house was built as a four-bedroom, but the septic system wasn't quite big enough for it originally. I'm not sure how that happened, but we're expanding the system. And if this floods, it's going to directly affect that expansion, directly, you know, affect the sewage disposal of my home. And that's what, you know, we're just, we just want to make sure that all this is handled properly, that this water doesn't pond, it doesn't slow down, it doesn't stay right there. If you look at the map that was sent in the package you guys sent out, they're the four lots that come off the end of Roswell Drive over there. That is directly where the drop-off is. One of those houses is sitting pretty much in the middle of that drop-off. And I'm not sure, you know, I understand you, they have engineers and the folks who are going to design this for them and I'm sure they're very capable. But that's a tremendous amount of water and that's a very, very low-lying area. If it slows it down at all, it's definitely going to start flooding our property. Not asking for them to fix what's already been done in the past with mistakes of undersized stormwater systems that were mentioned by Mr. Meyer earlier, but at least not to make it worse and not to impact us anymore. The other thing, a couple of other things that come to mind as I'm sitting here is a creek that crosses Lot 15R, which is zero Vancouver Court. That creek is not shown on this map. It cuts, basically dissects my lot in half and then continues on to the property where this is going to be developed. And again, I don't see that creek represented. I did have some concerns as to what would be done with that. Would that be redirected off my property or would it be stopped, moved, what have you? And then the buffering, as I heard mentioned earlier, Mr. Siegel mentioned that the lots back there would be, you know, six feet lower and there would be a six-foot privacy fence. But the lots, the homes that were built on Fairweather, at the end of Fairweather, as well as the ones on the cul-de-sac at the end of Roswell, in order for them to be lower than my property and not looking into my backyard, they're going to have to be pretty, I mean, pretty deep, honestly. They're on a hillside above my backyard. So I don't see how they're not going to look over and affect our privacy. So my question would be, what sort of a buffer or a berm are we going to get over here? Because again, looking at these maps that were sent to us, I can't see a buffer or a berm other than the land I currently own and what trees I don't take out being there. So, I mean, that's pretty much all I have, other than to just ask that the vote be no for this rezoning.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next person is Margaret.
Hi, thank you very much for hearing us today. My name's Margaret Ryder. I live at 6845 Vance Road. I'm just down at the very end of Kerner Road. And I want to give you all a little bit of anecdotal evidence to support some of the things that you've heard tonight. I've lived in Kernersville for just over a year at this point. My husband and I moved out of Greensboro into this town to be in a small town, to be surrounded by woods and to not have the multifamily and single-family houses that I can hold hands with my next-door neighbor while sitting on the commode. While, within the very first month that I lived here, we had a death in our front yard coming off of Kerner Road. A month later, yet another accident. A month later, yet another accident. A month later, yet another accident. In less than a year, I've had four incidents in front of my property and/or in my yard that involved a death and/or a serious incident. I'm very concerned for the people that travel up and down these roads, including the bikers that frequent our Kerner and Vance Road roads, adding 118 cars a day at a minimum, which we all know, every one of those houses is going to have more than one car. And we are concerned from a traffic incident, from a traffic standpoint here in our small town, that this area is going to get overrun even more. Vance Road is a connector point from Reedsville up to Kerner Road and to get into the town. And we are highly concerned that the amount of traffic that's going to flood through this area is severely going to not only impact the safety of our neighbors and of our kids and of these people, the pedestrians that use these streets every single day. And I would ask that the board decline and say no to this. The people are watching and we're really concerned about opening up the possibility of that slippery slope and introducing maybe multifamily, maybe a duplex here, maybe a duplex there. The prior speaker before me, Mr. Fairclough, spoke about how his septic tank and his septic system were undersized and he didn't know how that happened. This exact thing, I'm in this industry, I'm in this construction industry currently, and this exact way is how this happens. All the promises come out on the front end and they promise RSQ, RSQC is all going to be, all these things. And the likelihood is that we're opening up the ability for us to walk that slippery slope way too close. And I don't want to see that happen to this town. People leave the city and the convenience of the city to have the nice trees, to have the nice grass. They don't come to the country. We don't come out to these small towns to have our neighbors sit within a 5,000-square foot space. I would ask that the board says no tonight and support this local town. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person is Farrah Hilton.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening. I'm Farrah Hilton. My husband Richard and I live at 509 Bexley Place Lane, directly across the street from where one of the access points will be. I'm not going to repeat anything that's already been said here tonight. Instead, I want to speak to you as a school teacher at one of these schools, which will be impacted by this overly large development. In the proposal, Ms. Garner mentioned that WSFCS has sent copies of estimates for students in this area. Unfortunately, this estimation is not the reality that we deal with in the classrooms on a daily basis. You are looking at three schools, East Forsyth High School, Kernersville Middle School, and Piney Grove Elementary. We are all overrun. We are all taxed. If you look back, there was a bond that went through for building funds. These have not been carried out in any capacity as of yet. So the building of any new structure or facility is not going to be a reality. We are going to further overtax resources that we do not have. Currently, at my school, we are understaffed. We are overcapacity in our classrooms. Another issue that we need to consider is not just with the staffing in the schools, but with busing in our area. We are already short 35 bus drivers in our county. Students are arriving to school anywhere between 15 and 45 minutes late every day as it is. If we add in 118 homes and each person has one child, just one, that is already more buses than we currently have access to. Another issue are the bus stops. We have a bus stop at the end of Bexley Place Lane. It is very dangerous as it is with the curve right past Dean Road in front of Interlaken. People are already driving extremely quickly through that area and there is no stopping them if a child is crossing the street to get on the bus. Essentially, this plan does not account for what we are doing to our schools. You are essentially passing the buck to the school system and telling them to figure it out without offering funds for it. This subdivision will further tax an already overly taxed system. I ask that you vote no for the rezoning and I thank you all for your time and attention.
Thank you very much.
The next person we have is Carrie Maddox.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Carrie Maddox. I moved here in 1993. I live at 1182 Kerner Farm Road. My property directly overlooks the Callahan land. I've been very upset about this whole situation. The main reason is that there has not been any communication up until today about the actual plans for these houses. There is already so much traffic. If you try to come out of my driveway, it's very, very dangerous. I'm also concerned about, no one's brought this up, but we have a wonderful well here. And I don't know what's going to happen to the well with all this construction going on. But it's already, you know, just too much going on, too many houses. So for this reason, I ask that you keep it at RS20 and you say no to this development. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next person is Tiffany Ramos.
Hey, everyone. My name is Tiffany Ramos and I reside with my family at 12, no, that's the wrong address, 6015, sorry about that, 6015 Charring Drive in Abington. My mom resides on Kerner Road. We also have property on Dean Road that we plan on building at some point. So yes, it's not in my backyard, but it will be soon. I sent in a PowerPoint. There's a lot of things in there. I will just touch on a few things. The first one is a quote from the development plan of Kernersville. It says, "Kernersville has fixed city limits within three major triad cities. Typically, cities with fixed limits begin a slow process of decline. This is usually due to new development activity seeking undeveloped areas in new locations on the urban fringe, those greenfields." And Greenfield's definition is land not previously developed or polluted. There's also a picture, Catherine, if you can go to slide, let's do 15, 14, let's do 14 first. There's a lot of stuff in here. You guys should take a look at it. But what I did here is I took the proposed neighborhood and I dropped it directly on where it's going to be laid. Can you guys see those lot lines?
Yeah.
If you go to the next slide, you'll be able to see them a lot better. We'll zoom in because it's hard to see all of them in comparison with the other neighborhoods. So you can see the difference. And this is the biggest challenge that we have here is it doesn't fit like the others. And then I'm going to skip through to slide 21, if that's okay. And I know this was discussed about the numbers of acre- And I know this was discussed about the numbers of acreage, homes per acreage. But if you consider the net development area, this is a different way of calculating your density. If you take the property lots, which is 23.76 acres, you minus the street and the common elements, this comes out to five homes per acre. Yes, there are other places. There's that green area. There are streets. There are sidewalks. There are curbs. There are gutters. But ultimately, when you look at the property, it's five homes per acre. The next one I want to talk about is, let's go to slide 29, please, Ms. Garner. And I know this was mentioned, but you know, 75% of, if you guys can't tell, I do PowerPoints for my normal job, so I have all these fancy transitions, so I apologize. I was kidding. It was a little late last night when I was putting this together. But 75% of the members of the planning board, you live in RS20 zone locations. And the town development calls this an antiquated type of development. Now, I'm not old, but that makes me feel old because I live in this area and I'm in RS20. Or maybe 30 because I'm in Abington. But I'm not, I don't like being called old yet. I'm getting there. Slide 30 talks about how many homes were sold in Abington in the last six months. That's 37. So there is a market still for RS20 homes. People don't want to necessarily live right next to each other. We came from Florida. I was in a townhouse. We could touch our neighbors. And slide 31 talks about how many are on the market right now, which is one. That's all we have left in Abington is one home for sale. Slide 32, that's the last one. Fairweather Drive is considered a residential street. It can't handle this traffic. If you guys have been down there, have you guys actually visited that street, that Fairweather? I know somebody on this board does live in the neighborhood that is going to be, all of those homes are going to be pouring into. But if you can, go take a look at it. It can't handle this. There is absolutely no way. And I want to thank you guys for all your time and the community for stepping up on this.
Thank you.
The next person is Dave McDaniel, and Chairman Waddell, this would be our last speaker.
Yes, my name is Dave McDaniel. I live at 1100 Fairweather Drive. I'm right on the corner of Rockford and Fairweather Drive. I sent in a video earlier in regards to some of the videos that were sent in to the flooding coming down over on Cliffwood and down that side. I don't know if we can show that video right now.
It's up right now.
That is after the city of Winston-Salem come through here and put down their matting, their erosion control, and all the above, and you can see what kind of water is coming down on this side of the street. As you can see, the water's going over the erosion control. It's bleeding on through down to the end of the street and then bleeding over into the proposed subdivision. I do agree with one of the earlier comments made that the culvert systems need to be looked at, the drainage systems, not building dams, building actual pass-throughs for the water to get through. I do not believe the ponds that are being proposed are going to handle the waters that are talking about coming from two different sections just in this side of the subdivisions, going to them ponds, but the other routes that water is coming from other directions. One thing I cannot understand is everybody was talking about emergency access. Why has there not been considered a third access to Roswell Drive? Not just Fairweather, not just Kerner Road, but why cannot a third access be considered around one of the ponds to Roswell Drive? My wife, she was stopped the other day on Piney Grove Road from school traffic. The school at Piney Grove Road, she was stopped all the way back to UniFirst where the Old Lowe's Food was. And she sat there for 30 minutes. Both lanes stopped in both directions. A EMS, a fire truck, nothing could get through. For 30 minutes. What if somebody had been having a heart attack, a health concern that needed immediate attention? Now, one thing nobody has talked about on this call tonight is environmental aspect of our groundwater. I work for a water and wastewater industry. I actually am a supervisor for the company that supplies the water here and also to part of Abington, well, not Abington, Smoke Rice Graystone. The runoff, the pollution, it's already impacted some of our wells in this area. We have took one of the wells offline that supply water to the Hidden Hills subdivision because of some of the new EPA testing with PFOS PFOLA, which came from our local fire department here on Piney Grove Road. The well is contaminated with PFOS PFOLA. As soon as the EPA recommended testing for this, we started testing. We found out it was present in this one particular well. We took it offline. You know, we've got to protect our natural resources on earth. You are putting in housing that is going to take up what supplies our groundwater sources. If you put everything under roof, concrete, and asphalt, how is groundwater going to replenish itself? That's one of the reasons we're saying no to the proposal and we hope you take our recommendation and vote no on this matter. That's all I had to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the petition?
We have no one further at this time, Chairman.
Okay. Then I'll declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'm not in favor of this project the way it's presented to us tonight.
One thing a lot of people have talked about is water runoff. The developer can do nothing to increase the amount of water that is running off the property now. So I just want everybody to know that. That's by state law. So he has to design the systems that will control the water runoff that is generated from this proposal.
Jim, I hear you. I understand you, but it seems to always still happen every time a new community is built. I don't know the answer to it. I'm not smart enough to know. But the water really does concern me, especially the videos we've seen. And I'm looking and I'm assuming that Mr. Fairclough backed up to that lot 118 on the map. Maybe Catherine can clarify that.
Yes, the Fairclough property does back up to both parcels 118 and then 114. There where the new road is to go in.
You can't increase that water supply there either.
What?
There's a lot of water naturally running through that area. He can't, he has to develop systems not to make it worse. Not to increase the amount of water that's running through it now.
I asked, or I showed the videos that we had received to the town engineer today to get his thoughts on them. His comment was that out-of-bank flooding can occur even in areas that are not in flood zones and that there are a lot of things that contribute to flooding, be it the actual storm event, the lay of the land, that sort of thing. But that's why in the past 30 years, additional regulations have been proposed and put in place by the state and federal government about buffers and things to protect the streams that are carrying the capacity. But Mr. Waddell is correct, that the stormwater regulations are required to limit the the increase in the water runoff generated through the development.
Other comments or questions?
I think, this is Braden Burke, I think though that there's some other concerns besides the water runoff. I mean, I think there's some serious, I have some concerns about sort of the egress entrance into this neighborhood. I mean, looking at, just as an example, Fairview, if that doesn't appear, I don't see how that road in its current configuration handles it. And Kerner Road, they're almost going to require, would require more than just turn lanes, I think, to handle that traffic. I understand DOT has weighed in on this, but I'm not sure I concur with their findings.
Chairman Waddell, we have someone that would like to rebuttal when you're ready, and it's an opposed.
He's rebutting the opposition?
We have someone that would like, yeah, they were against. They would like to speak again.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Tiffany, you can go ahead and unmute.
Okay, I'm sorry, guys. I got so excited. I forgot two points. This is Tiffany Ramos again, the one who didn't know her address. We talked about the town not wanting to split up the through drive into two separate cul-de-sacs. I'll tell you from experience, if I can get somewhere faster through a cut-through, I'm going to do it. And I guarantee every person who needs to get to Piney Grove faster than going down Level Springs Road is going to cut through this neighborhood. I guarantee. Because I'll do it. And I know that that's not going to be something that everybody's going to want. So that's one. And two, I was forwarded two videos of a bald eagle flying on the property gathering food. And there's been some recommendations from an organization that deals with bald eagles in preserving the area, making sure that if there is a nest, that it's either relocated or if there's roosting or foraging or watering areas, we need to be concerned with that. And a permit from the USFWS. Now, this information was forwarded to me, so I just wanted to provide that as well. But you should have those videos of those eagles and it's beautiful. And that's it. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
This is Luanne. I'm having a really difficult time with this. I don't know if I'm even prepared to vote on this and it seems like they've just, or the developers and the, Mr. Segal have just started to have conversations with the neighbors, maybe over the last, I don't know, day, two days, three days, I can't decide. I've tried, we got forwarded comments today that was like 100 pages to read an hour before this meeting. And it appears that they've started to have conversations over maybe one day or two days. I'm kind of in favor in letting them discuss, have some more time with the neighbors and residents in the surrounding area.
That's fine. You want to put in a formal motion?
Chairman, I think that applicant would like to speak again since we heard rebuttal comments from the opposition before receiving rebuttal comments from those in favor.
What did you say, Catherine? I'm sorry.
I was told that the applicant would like to be able to provide some rebuttal comments.
Okay, that's fine. They see you on the line.
I believe so. Beth, can you clarify?
Yes, Amanda is still on here and if she wants to unmute and speak, she can.
Okay, go ahead. Rebuttal.
Thank you very much. So, and I appreciate the opportunity. Some of the points, and I've been taking notes the entire time while the neighbors have been speaking in opposition. You know, one of the first points was the request from Ms. Doyle about a berm or buffer along her property and we would be willing to look at that and talk further with her and plan quite frankly to meet with her next week, as well as her comment about looking at a substrate between Lot 47 and Lot 48 that would have joined their property. So I wanted to comment on that. There was another question that was brought up early on by one of the neighbors about the proposal of if you were to cul-de-sac at the creek, from the creek down to Kerner Road and then from the creek up to Fairweather, and how many lots would that be coming off of just Fairweather? And the answer to that was those 22 one-story planned community houses. I did want to address real quick that water runoff across the Fairclough property, and we did talk to the Fairclough and saw their videos. And from our understanding, you know, that water is currently running across their property due to the fact that subdivisions that they are adjoining them were built many years ago and didn't have the stormwater controls that are now required in today's regulations. And so that is why they are experiencing the extreme amount of stormwater runoff across their property. And that property, all that water runoff from the Fairclough comes directly onto this property. And the concern that was brought to our attention by the Fairclough was that that stormwater was coming kind of where we're proposing lots off of Roswell. And that area, you know, obviously is a very important area to look at and to make sure that that water that's coming off of that property onto Roswell would be, whether it's the right size culvert or what, that would be what we would be looking for, the engineers and Chris Jensen, to make the best determination of how to handle that. But I think that video is a great example of why they put these stormwater controls in place that you've seen over these many years, because a lot of these subdivisions back then were not designed to properly handle that. And today's subdivisions are required to keep their water on their property and not let it go onto others. You know, we heard some comments about other folks wanting buffers. We're willing to talk about that. You know, the school overcrowding comment, I've heard that before. We've all heard that before. You know, unfortunately, that's not something the town of Kernersville has the jurisdiction of making, but the schools are paid for by tax dollars. And the way that you continue to pay for schools is to allow development to have more taxes to pay for schools. And I know that's a very unpopular statement, but that's how schools get their money. Schools get their money from development and from tax base, an additional tax base to pay for those schools. So Forsyth County will make the determination how they handle that. Most of the school systems already have plans on how they're going to handle the continued growth because this area is a popular area and not only in Kernersville, but state and North Carolina. And that is wholly expected. You know, Guilford County has already put together a plan for how they're going to handle the school overcrowding for many years. So there was a comment made by the last gentleman about a third access on the Roswell Drive into the neighborhood. But the reason that that is not on the plan is that those creeks are regulated by North Carolina Department of Natural Resources. And you cannot have such, you know, certain impact across these creeks. And right now, the one creek crossing shows pretty much is probably the max creek crossing impact that you can have. And Dena is not willing to allow you to cross the creek three times, which would be what would happen to connect and have a third access point into Roswell Drive. So we're happy to answer any other questions the board may have. And thank you very much for giving us the time for clarification. And I think there is like just one point.
One, just one simple point is the question of, I'll call it the connectivity to Fairweather Street. And our, just to clarify, it was a question raised before by one of the gentlemen. We said we certainly would look at and consider, okay, from our side and be receptive to cul-de-sacking, okay, that street. and be receptive to, uh, cul-de-sacking, okay, that street on both sides of the creek, such that there would not be that connectivity. And I know that is a concern, okay, to the, the staff. Uh, and in one of our initial, uh, concept drawings, and I think there was some discussion on, okay, we certainly would have preferred not accessing, uh, Fairweather at all and cul-de-sacking our street, okay, uh, basically at the end of Fairweather, or just before the end of Fairweather. Uh, and we understand the staff's position that you have Fairweather, this sub-street, okay, was designed, the anticipation was the fact it was going to continue on in order to meet the connectivity requirements uh, that virtually all towns and cities are, are looking at. Irregardless, we are certainly willing to have that discussion. If in fact, uh, the board, uh, would like us to pursue that, uh, we could have that additional discussion with the staff. But we certainly do understand the staff's position, particularly with regard to discussions with fire marshal and, and folks in the emergency services. Uh, so we're, we're certainly, uh, open for that. And just to clarify, we did send a letter, I think it was last week, early part of last week, to all the neighbors. Uh, and it was basically within about a day or so from the time that we've got that mailing list. Um, and I think that is pretty much the standard, uh, procedures that, once we get that mailing list, um, and we extended the invitation for anybody and everybody to call us and talk to us. Uh, we did in fact have maybe a total of, was, uh, half a dozen conversations uh, with folks that did in fact pick up the phone and communicate with us. So, um, we'll certainly be more than happy to answer any, any of the questions that you may have. Uh, I know stormwater is a big issue. Uh, there was a question about the impact on the groundwater, if you cover everything with concrete, you know. And every bit of surface area, uh, that has coverage has got to go into the retention ponds. That water will go back into the ground, okay? Uh, you know, or back into the streamage or wherever it may be. So, but that's more of an engineering, uh, discussion between the engineer.
Mr. Siegel, there seems to be a lot of areas that you're willing to discuss, both with staff and maybe, maybe neighbors. How would you feel about a continuous to our next meeting, so give you a chance to, to do that?
Um, we, we're always happy to have, uh, discussions, okay, with people. Um, I, uh, you know, certainly very open to that. Um, I do not know if we are going to honestly address uh, their reservation about, uh, making lots RS twenty and be able to meet the town's development requirements. Uh, there was a, a question posed to us with more of like, um, uh, we would propose to the town that they basically, uh, not require this development to meet their development standards. And it could be developed under the old RS twenty with, without curb and gutter, without sidewalks, not as wide roads, okay, and, and so forth. And, uh, respectfully, we have said to those that we've had the discussion, uh, you are certainly free to, to have that discussion, okay, with the town. But we would personally be very, very surprised, um, if the town would basically waive all of those development standards. Uh, and if the town holds us to the development standards that are currently in place today, okay, uh, economically, we don't know how. We, or for that matter, and I can't speak for everybody, could do a development with RS twenty with city water, city sewer, okay, wide streets, curb and gutter, sidewalks on both sides, and to comply with all the state and the federal guidelines for development. Unless in fact, that individual or that organization felt that they could basically uh, have a development and the home prices, that there's a market for home prices of six hundred and fifty to a million dollars, or whatever it might be. Uh, and if that is, is certainly the, the case, uh, then that is not what we believe and we think economically, uh, that would be suicide. And even if we were to do that, we would have a development that could take twenty years to build out. Uh, and I don't think the neighbors, anybody would be very happy with the majority of the lots sitting there barren for year after year after year.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Siegel?
No, I, I've been answering your question, yes, we, we certainly would be willing to. Uh, if it was the board's pleasure to have additional conversation, uh, where we would end up, I, I certainly could, and I'll tell you, that's gonna be a, a question with the staff. And I think Catherine has expressed the staff's position. Uh, cuz we proposed to Catherine this afternoon, that based upon our conversations with the neighbors, that one of the, the areas that was a, what we thought were significant concern to some was the connectivity to Fairweather. And if, uh, the, the neighbors, uh, suggested and asked us to, uh, not have that connectivity through the development to Fairweather, so that everybody can go back out to Fairweather if they so elected, which we doubt they would. But if they did, then we will be receptive to that, okay? And to modify our plan to either go ahead and cul-de-sack on both sides of the creek, which would deal then with the stormwater concern and the size of the culvert and things of that sort, and the impact. Or alternatively, to make the crossing, but then cul-de-sack before you get to Fairweather. Right? And, and, um, I think staff has told us very clearly that earlier on this evening, that they will not endorse, uh, that type of change to the plan, that they must require the connectivity.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Siegel. I suppose you're the board.
Well, Steve Hutchins, I'll make a motion. I think the developer opened the door tonight to, for future discussion with the local residents that surround the property. Um, seemed like a pretty straightforward case to me. I don't have a problem with the development. But they opened the door for some fur, some further discussion, and therefore I think it should be allowed. So I'll make a motion for that, to continue it to the next meeting for, for further discussion with the local, uh, surrounding properties.
Okay.
I'll second that. Chris Oakman.
Chris, okay. Any further discussion by the board?
Jim, I will say that, you know, we discuss connectivity at every meeting we have. And I know people don't wanna hear this, but if you live in a neighborhood and there's a substrate, it's there for a reason. Something's gonna be connected to it at some point in time in the future, more than likely. And I, I would like to not see them give up any connectivity on this particular project.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I, I totally agree. We, the connectivity is super important. We push it, the town standards push it, and it, it, we, we always seem to just give up when, when people don't like it. And unfortunately, it has a purpose, and we have to remember them. And, uh, it, there is a, it's very important, and it's done for a reason. And I agree with Luanne, we, nobody likes it, but unfortunately, it's necessary.
And, and, and maybe if the developer, um, you know, so chooses to prevent this, this from being a cut through to Piney Grove Road, or, or something like that, they could, they could do what they've done over off of, uh, Union Cross and put great big speed bumps throughout the, throughout the, the property. You know, they did that over at Union Cross over by Cracker Barrel, and that, that slowed everybody down.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second, we'll do a roll call. Margaret Burks? This is, the motion is to continue it till our next meeting.
Yes.
Christina Welch?
Yes, continue.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Luanne Davis?
Yes.
Nathan Meyer?
Yes.
Chris Oakman?
Yes.
Jim Frattonberg?
Yes.
Steve Hutchins?
Yes.
Scott Sapp?
Yes.
And I hope yes also, so a motion is carried. Next item on our agenda is public comments. Do we have anybody on the line that wishes to address the board?
We do not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Plan and board comments, Margaret?
Uh, well, I'm glad that you're gonna be the chairman again. You, you do a good job, and I thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Christina Welch?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Luanne?
No, sir.
Nathan?
Oh, it was wonderful the other week to have the spring fall folly. And see people out in the downtown part of Kernsville having a good time.
Good. Chris Oakman?
I know, uh, the only thing I wanna say is, um, Jeff, we're gonna miss you.
Sounds like he left already, so. Jim Frattonberg?
Yeah, so, yeah, Jeff, it's been a genuine pleasure working with you over the years. Um, and thanks for all your service to our town. And, uh, I appreciate the board, um, letting me, or sort of trying to follow Luanne Davis's shoes in vice, in the vice chair role. So, I'll try not to mess it up.
Thank you.
Steve Hutchins?
Well, we've always had a great chairman, and we're glad to have him for another, another term. And Jim, we appreciate you coming in second. And, uh, Jeff, thank you for everything you've done for the town of Kernsville. Uh, every time I've had to deal with you, it's always been a pleasure on both sides of the issues. So I, I definitely appreciate what you've done for the town of Kernsville.
Thank you.
Scott Sapp?
Thank you for your service, Jeff.
Well, evidently, I'm the only one to know, that does not know what's going on. So, so enlightening me.
He's announced that he's retiring at the end of the year.
Why? He's not old enough.
I second that.
I'll let him respond to that question. But I too would like to congratulate you, Jeff. You've been, you've done a lot for this town. And, uh, you've been a lot of help to me and a lot of help to this board, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, what else we got? Staff updates?
Yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna thank, um, IT. I thought they did a great job in this webinar. Um, Beth Price, um, running the, um, backup, getting everybody on. We had Cameron, um, running backup on the phone, so I, I, I thought this went well. Um, and so we did it so well that I think we'll go back to regular meetings, maybe. But this one was the crowds and stuff, but the main thing is the crowd. We were thinking about going back, um, live for December, uh, but with a larger participation. I mean, I think most planners around the country realize that remote meetings have actually increased public participation. Um, it offers people more of opportunity to view and participate. So, um, we'll, I believe, we'll, we'll announce later, um, the December meeting, we were thinking about going back live, but with this large participation we're having with this one, uh, we'll probably do our November, I'm sorry, it's, our November meeting, once again, remote. Um, cuz we did, that's, that IT and Beth and Cameron and everyone else, it's such a great job. Um, I appreciate you, you, um, the opportunity to work for Kernsville for the past, uh, twenty-four years. Um, and like Jim said, at the end of the year, I plan on retiring. And the, the ironic thing is that Catherine was accepted in a School of Government Leadership Management Training course. A very competitive, um, course that she was accepted into. And she'll missed in November and December Board of Alderman Meeting. So I was hoping to sit back more, but, um, I'm glad Catherine got the School of Government Leadership Management uh, acceptance in their program. Um, Catherine, I'll turn it over to you for staff reports. Yeah, for the future meetings.
Jeff, I just didn't want you to have, I didn't want you to have any like reservations about retiring and not getting one last hurrah. So, um, thanks School of Government for making that possible. Um, next month, we have a submittal for rezoning for a Travel Plaza at Old Greensboro Road and Macy Grove. Um, that one will be on your docket, as well as a commercial property on Highway sixty-six South um, in the Bishop McGinnis area, and then a final development plan for Caleb's Creek. So all of these have been submitted. Um, the Travel Plaza has already been to DRC, the two others will go. Uh, we are also looking at a text amendment, um, on, for chapter seven of the UDO. That's just a, it's a staff cleanup, staff desired cleanup, just to make things more, uh, easier to understand on the developer's side. So I do have one last thing to announce on behalf of Jeff. Um, my team submitted a nomination for Jeff uh, for a Marvin Collins Award through the North Carolina, um, chapter of the American Planning Association. And we found out a couple of weeks ago that he won, it's a career achievement award. Uh, this was presented to him at the annual conference, which was held virtually last week. Uh, we are looking at trying to convince somebody from the awards committee to come to the Alderman Meeting in November and present it to him live and in person. Uh, and when, when we have that scheduled, we will let you on those, so you can attend to see, um, Jeff get a public recognition in person. But we wanted to let you know that we're very, very proud of him, and we're gonna miss him very much.
Well deserved, thank you, Catherine. Anything else to be brought forward, board?
I have one question. On sixty-six, where the hotel used to be beside the old Susie's Diner, is anything happening there?
They're putting a driving school in, look like.
There's a proposal for, from a local logistics company to use it as a, uh, driver training location, but they haven't submitted anything for the rezoning yet. We've been in discussion with them and their engineer, but nothing formal's been submitted.
There's a sign up, says opening soon, some kind of driving schools.
I was wondering why everybody was talking about it.
Yeah. I don't know.
It's coming soon, and they haven't even submitted a proposal, that's awesome.
Anything else to be brought forward?
Glad to see they're tearing those houses down beside it, back in the woods there where the, the homeless have been, um, staying.
Okay, if we got anything else, we're adjourned, thank you.